Good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council held December 19, 2017. Before we start, we'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda.
It's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Kylie. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of December 19, 2017 with the following amendments. The addition of item 6.5A, which is a report from the Chief Administrative Officer on the 2018 water wastewater budget as amended, and with the removal of item 6.3A, the extension of the two-way radio exemption. And the reason for that is because we did receive notice yesterday from the Ontario Good Roads that there has been an extension on that to 2021.
All in favor? Let's carry it. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? Tonight I'll be declaring a conflict on item or bylaw 17-131. No. Which one am I? On bylaw 17-130, as it is a family member that is doing the purchase. Any petitions and delegations? None? Acceptance of the minutes and recommendations?
It's moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Morgan. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The meeting to open sealed tenders for the 2018 snow hall held November 22, 2017. The special meeting of council held December 5, 2017, and the regular meeting of council held December 5, 2017.
All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Reports of municipal officers and communications, item 6. I guess tonight we could start with, at a recent NEOMA meeting, the city of Timmins had made a request to the association as well as to northern communities to support their bid to be the host site for Norant's ferrochrome processing facility. And they're going after that facility. I guess it's Ring of Fire. They've asked for our support. And one of the biggest differences with the Timmins bid is that they have involved the Ontario North Line Railway. So that would certainly bring much-needed life back to the railway. And I believe it's Timmins, Sudbury, and Sault Ste. Marie are the three locations. And Timmins have asked us if we would support their bid for it. And I said I would bring it here for council's consideration. Is there any questions? Or? Joanne can read the...
It's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Kylie. The council of the Town of Kirkland Lake supports the city of Timmins in its bid for the Norant ferrochrome processing facility. We encourage Norant to locate their FPF in Timmins, Ontario.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Kirkland Lake Festivals Committee Insurance. At the last, was it our last meeting or two meetings ago, we had the festivals committee. We had asked them to, during discussion, council had asked them to get the amount of what the insurance would cost for the year 2018, and which they've done. We've also asked them to put their association into a not-for-profit, and they've also done that. So what we have here tonight is the insurance invoice for the Kirkland Lake Festivals Committee for 2018. Any comments, questions?
That's part and parcel of that forthcoming agreement, right, Peter?
Yeah, this will make up one component of the agreement.
Okay.
Yes.
So the festival committee is happy with this? Did the one that did all the work?
They sent the invoice to me.
Okay.
And asked that. I presented to council.
They all covered just that?
Yep.
It's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Kylie. The council approved the festivals committee insurance fee of $9,060 for the year 2018.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Item 6-62 is, the treasurer is going to come up. Hosea, you're going to come up and speak on vesting properties, re-advertise under the tax sale. And Ryan, you're going to come up as well. Good. And if you could just make sure the green light's on in your... Thank you.
Yes, so we have before council this property that we are recommending that we do some write-offs and then re-advertise it and try to sell it. We attempted one time and it wasn't successful. There were no bids.
So, so the bids, there was one successful on one property. Are we looking to vest these properties or are we looking, the ones that there was no bid to re-advertise? Is that what we're...
So vesting is an option, but we would recommend that we try to write off as much tax as possible and re-advertise in hopes that we can sell it at a lower amount.
Okay. And that follows within, oh, councillor Roman, please.
I'm a little confused about the 145 Government Road West. Which property is that?
145 Government Road West?
Yeah. Or, but that was purchased, so that's not one that we're considering here, right?
No.
No.
No, no, the property that we're considering, it doesn't have a civic address. It's, it's the property that is the old Joe Ross Metals property.
Okay. That's, because the civic address for 145 Government Road West, isn't that a DVA building? And it says the assessed value is 2.2 million commercial.
Yes, sorry, that's not the property we're speaking of. So we're only speaking on the rule number that's 00546800000411900. That's the property we're speaking of. So it's just the one property.
Okay, so these minutes were just attached?
That's right. It was just an attachment to say that we did the tax sale. We had no bidders on that specific property.
So these are the three, actually?
No, they're not a consideration, just the one.
Please.
It have a resolution that's moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Morgan. The council approved the write-off of tax arrears, penalty and interest, and re-advertise under tax sale for tax file 14-020, which is Joe Ross Metals property.
Question?
Hosea, the seven, like, we're going to write off 72,000? Is that...
77,000. We have an update that's attached there.
Okay. So we're going to write off 77? Is that going to go against the uncollectibles for 2017 budget?
It's going to go against the actual uncollectibles, yes.
For this budget year?
For 2017.
Okay. Thank you.
So all in favor of that resolution? Oh, sorry. I'm still a little uncertain, okay. Which property is this now that we're considering? That's the, so that's the one by the...
We're voting to take it over?
We're voting not to vest.
Not to vest, okay.
Yeah, not to invest.
Because, yeah. Because it has some impact. Yes, we'd like to try to re-advertise it in hopes that it will sell to someone at a lower dollar value instead of us taking it over.
Okay, Jim? Okay, thank you. Okay, so all in favor, I'm sorry? Okay. Hosea, are you going to speak on the year-end reserves resolution or do you just want us to...
This one is, sorry. This one is the usual resolution that council does at the end of each year, and it's to give direction to staff as to what to do with any surpluses and what to do with any deficits.
Okay, we do that every year?
Yes, yes.
Joanne's got to read that. Oh, councillor Roman.
Okay, I just have a question about now the one for Archer Reserve Fund for Archer Drive. Any proceeds from the sale of land on Archer Drive be directed in its entirety to a reserve fund for Archer Drive? Should we be considering possibly directing that towards a new industrial subdivision as opposed to...
I think, you know...
Well, right now the bylaw says it goes to Archer Drive, right?
Or can that be changed at a later date?
Yeah, just to answer that, I think that for today's purposes, we continue with what we have, and at a future meeting, we could change the, we can redirect the money to where it's needed.
It's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Kylie. That the following transactions be recorded in accordance with the Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards in the reserves and the reserve funds for the year ended December 31, 2017. Number one, that any net revenues from sundry land sales be directed to the reserve for working capital. Number two, that in the event of a general revenue fund surplus in its entirety be allocated to the reserve for working capital. Number three, that the unspent portion of all 2017 capital projects funded by reserve for working capital be directed to the reserve for capital projects to ensure the completion of such projects in 2018. Number four, in the event of a consolidated deficit, the deficit shall be carried forward to the subsequent year's budget in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Act. Under the heading Reserve Funds, number one, that any surplus resulting in the Waterworks Fund be directed to the Reserve Fund for Water, the intention of which is to defray the costs of waterworks. Number two, that any surplus resulting in the wastewater fund be directed to the Reserve Fund for Wastewater, the intention of which is to defray the costs of wastewater. Number three, that any proceeds from the sale of, or long-term lease of land located on Archer Drive be directed in its entirety to the existing Reserve Fund for Archer Drive. And number four, that any proceeds from donations to the New Aquatic Centre be directed in its entirety to the Reserve Fund for New Aquatic Centre.
Questions? All in favor? Thank you, Hosea. Item 6.3, Joanne, you're going to speak on...
This is, you do not have to make a decision on this. I am just giving you some notice on the election. As you know, that 2018 is an election year, so there are some requirements that I have to do by the end of this year. The first one is that advertising has to go out, so that is going out to, in the update on Friday, and it is on our website. I'm also, I have not printed off, but I do have the municipal election procedures for 2018 completed. If anybody would like a copy, you're more than welcome to give me a call and I will give it to you, or I can email it to you. It is linked on our website, and this entire package will also be on our website under the elections tab. So there's more things I will be bringing to you in the next little while for the election. The election date is October 22. The nomination period has changed. It's now starting from May 1, so it's not January 1. So it is a shorter time period, and we will have everything ready for May 1.
Thank you, Joanne.
Joanne, are you going to the tabulators again?
Yes, vote tabulators. And we will be having advanced vote. Advanced vote previously, I did have to come to council and get a bylaw. That's been removed from council now, and that's now under the clerk, so you will be notified, but it's not something that will come back as a bylaw form.
The clerk is in charge of it.
Pardon me?
The clerk is in charge of it.
Clerk is in charge. It's my party.
Joanne, the requirement for the 25 signatures is...
My understanding that's still going to go through, but smaller municipalities can ask for an exemption from it, but if you have enough people in your municipality, I do believe that it is going to, is still going to be in effect. I don't think the Ministry of Municipal Affairs has actually set out the regulations yet, but it will be amended for smaller municipalities.
Hello. Okay, so I've got two things to ask for with this report to council. The first was to allow for the addition of two garbage bags per household to accommodate for waste over the holidays. What I'm proposing is that we host this from the week of January 1 to January 5, just to sort of capture everything that's going to be opened up on Christmas Day. So that's the first request. We have done this in the past. It's within our contract, so it doesn't cost more from the municipal standpoint to offer this service. We do potentially lose out on revenue by people bringing that garbage to the landfill and being charged a $2 per bag fee, but that's where the loss would be. The second part was to offer a free Christmas tree drop-off at the landfill. Again, in the past, we've done a snow dump, or sorry, the drop-off at the snow dump. I did try to ask our, the public works department whether or not there's any costs associated with that. Typically, they just push it, and it forms part of the fill for the snow dump. So there is a $400 cost related to the staffing equipment to push that off to the side. So I did recommend that we just host the free drop-off at the landfill, just to avoid those costs. But again, that's up for discussion if you'd like to discuss it. Is there any questions about this? It's pretty straightforward.
Councillor Morgan.
I like it in the first. One of the things, Ashley, with the Christmas waste after the Christmas holidays, are we sort of clarifying for people what's acceptable in recycling? Because I got to tell you, like, these new bins, they are a big hit on my street, and it looks like everybody wants to recycle. And I'm just wondering, like, can all that Christmas wrapping go in recycling? No way. So I mean, but we're going to clarify that?
Yeah, it's within the municipal update, so I have it drafted, ready to go. I'll give Laura the approval. If we're approved, to go ahead. That's typically addressed in our ad. And also, whenever there's room in the municipal update, we do sort of put a blurb in about what's considered recyclable materials for Kirkland Lakes. It's different in every municipality.
Right, I was just thinking more holiday-specific.
Specific to Christmas, yeah. Christmas papers, yeah.
But that's awesome, because I really think that, you know, I don't know, but seems like we're getting a lot more buy-in on the recycling, I'm guessing.
Yeah, it's actually going very well.
Councillor Shamir.
Yeah, I was going the same thing about Todd. So just that people know, maybe put a little thing, they're allowed to put more than their blue recycling box they're allowed to put. Can they put a box full of cardboard?
It, no. So not recyclable materials, it's garbage that we're going to be...
No, 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 but if a cardboard is recyclable, can they put a box beside their blue bin? Or do you want it in a box, or just both, put it in a blue box or...
So this request is specifically for waste? I didn't consider recycling?
I know, I know, I'm just talking about recycling, I know.
You'd have to direct me to do that as well, and I'd have to, I'm not sure what would...
Because I think I'm like Todd Moore, I think there'd be more recycling than there'd be garbage, really.
A lot of the Christmas wrapping paper is not recyclable. You get a lot of gift boxes, yeah.
We also have a big black box.
Mm-hmm. It's something I can certainly try to look into. I'm not sure what, I'm positive, I'm pretty sure the contracts itself between recycling and waste are very similar, that it'll allow for us to be able to...
In recycling, they're allowed to put more than one. They don't care.
They don't care?
No. The people have some small blue box, they put three or four of them, or somebody will have a big one, but they put a little one.
Because you probably get the revenue from it, so it's a benefit. So yeah, that's the way we've been doing things.
But if it has no blue box, they should be okay too.
To put it, yeah, I don't want to say that. Confirm it. Can I get back to you on that one?
Yeah, just talk to them.
Okay.
Because like I'm on the top side, there'll be more recycling than the, all the cardboard is, is what's going to take room.
Okay, I can look into it and get back to you, and we can try and include something in the municipal update as well.
Councillor Roman.
I'm certainly in favor of the additional bags. I'm also in favor of the Christmas tree drop-off at the land, or at the snow dump. It's pretty minor cost, and a lot of people can't get their trees out to the landfill site, so they're going to end up in back lanes or, I know they're trees and they're decomposable, but for $400, I prefer that we go back to letting people dump their Christmas trees at the snow dump and we take care of them.
Yeah, and that would be my comment as well, that I think, you know, it's so handy to, people could throw it in their trunk and drive it just to the, to the snow dump as opposed to all the way out to our landfill site. I'd be in agreement too to allow them again this year to dump at the snow dump here in Kirkland, but I don't know if the rest of council wants to do that, or...
Just to support Ashley, they did have to get it to their house, so they've got a car or something, so.
No doubt. Yeah, just a lot, you know, a lot of the trees, yeah, a lot of the trees, they come around, they, it's a lot easier, you know? And, but if it...
What about doing both?
Well, yeah.
There's no extra cost if you, it's, the landfill site is manned anyways, it's open in the regular hours, so we're not incurring any extra cost?
No, we typically would charge for the bags, and then we'd charge for the back of the truck if it was full. But if we offered a free Christmas tree drop-off in the landfill, that's...
What does the motion read?
Right now it's reading what my recommendation was, so that we approve the collection of up to two garbage bags per residential property, and then two landfill-free tipping for the trees at the landfill.
I would, I would just, well, I'm not the mover of that motion, so I don't...
Yeah.
So Jim, we want to, we could see and see if it gets a support of council, that we also include the snow dump as a drop-off for the used Christmas trees?
So it's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Kylie. The council approves the collection of up to two additional garbage bags per residential property to facilitate non-recyclables during the holiday season, and that council approves the disposal of Christmas trees at the landfill site and the snow dump free of charge.
All in favor? Thank you.
So I'm going to step down? Not yet.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. So right after this? Because I'm not that simple right now. Oh. Because of Mayor Tony's declaration of conflict interest, it reverts back to me. Councillor Tom Barker is the December deputy mayor, but he's not here, and therefore it reverts to me, so I'll be chairing this part. And I guess, Ashley, you're still on the hot seat, because we're talking about a property purchase on Queen and George Street, so do you want to preamble it?
Yep. This hasn't been brought to open council at this point, so I just wanted to provide a brief summary of the offer that was submitted. So this offer was submitted by Barry and Kathy Morrison, and it's to purchase property at the southwestern corner of Queen and George Street, the intersection there. The offer was submitted at $25,000 with the condition that, there's two conditions associated with the offer when it was originally submitted. The waive, waiver of a fee of $1,725 for zoning amendment application, and I'll explain why later. And the second one was for us to review and provide an estimate of what it would cost to service the property. So that's been provided to them. I do stipulate the bottom here that it's roughly approximately, it's roughly $28,000, but that doesn't include any rock, so if there is rock, it'll be more in excess of the $28,000.
At whose expense?
At their expense. Yeah, that's at their expense, that's $25,000 plus the servicing. The waiver of the zoning application, that was something that they had requested, and the purpose of that is that, we just finished our official plan. Our official plan actually redesignated the property from rural to residential. The zoning bylaw update is supposed to take place this spring, and it is supposed to be proposed to go to a single and semi-detached dwelling, like a low to medium density zone, which is what they're asking for. But to make sure that we don't wait until that happens and that potentially gets appealed at the OMB, we'll do a separate zoning amendment for that to happen, and it'll be considered separately as part of this land sale. So they've asked whether we could waive the fee since it was going to be done later anyways. So in terms of the process to sell, this was a non-solicited offer to purchase, which is allowed within our purchase and sale bylaw. The notice of intent to sell the lands has to be provided five days prior to the sale, and we did that back in November. We were actually waiting on the survey to be registered. That's why it took so long to come back to council. The property has not been declared surplus because it was an unsolicited offer on land that hadn't been declared surplus, so we're doing that as part of the bylaw, which is a little different than we typically sold properties, is they previously get declared surplus before that. It is consistent with the bylaw for sale.
So there's a recommendation for a purchase price of $25,000 with a waiving of the $1,725 zoning amendment?
Yeah, and that, and it'll be in it, the servicing costs are the responsibility of the owner, and that's done through a separate bylaws, through the servicing bylaw that says that if you want to service a property, it's the actual cost of servicing. So we don't need to add that as a condition.
So this council only needs to approve your recommendation, everything else is all internal staff stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, questions?
Clarification, do we do the motion on this?
I have a bylaw. We can either do the bylaw now while you're sitting at the chair, or we can do it in chronological order and have you come back at that time.
Okay, any objections, council? We'll do right now, one swoop? Okay, please.
So it's moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Morgan. The bylaw 17-130, being a bylaw to authorize the acting mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of property at the southwest corner of Queen and Porteous Avenue to Mr. and Mrs. Barry Morrison, that be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
Just for clarification, you're voting on the bylaw that's item number 77130. Any further questions, discussion?
So did we approach all the neighbors on this? Make sure...
No.
I know we don't have to, but should we tell them?
Typically, we notify neighbors if it's going to be like a laneway. In this instance, there's going to be road allowance in between the nearest property and outside. No, I didn't notify the neighbors.
I know one of them know, but I don't know if the rest. It's probably not important.
Well, it's a residential development, so you're not putting a business beside a residence, so should be quite acceptable.
Well, yeah, they have an opportunity to comment on the rezoning application.
Okay, so there is another intervention? Okay, any other questions? I'll call it to vote. All in favor? Thank you, Kerry. Oh, sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll dismiss myself. Item 6.5 is, Peter's going to speak on the waste, on the water wastewater budget. Your, sir?
Yeah, so this is a follow-up from the December 5 meeting. We have run some numbers. We did, we corrected the, or updated, I guess, the year-end variance on some revenue projections and some expenditures on the water side. And are, basically, we're coming down about $50,000 for, on the deficit, 2017 deficit. So I, in, on December the 5th, we had anticipated a $73,000 deficit. As of today, we're anticipating a $23,000 deficit, it's highlighted in yellow. For this, this, for an 11% water rate increase, you will get the base budget increase, which is your hydro, your direct costs associated with, direct staff costs that were missed, plus your program support cost, plus we will do a capital project to look at the brown water, and we will do a capital project to fund one water pump. This is what 11% gets you on the water side. Do you want me to go through the wastewater one as well, just so you... Do you want me to go through the wastewater one as well, just so you have?
Well, I I've got a number of questions regarding both the water and wastewater.
I can present the wastewater, just so everyone knows, so. On the wastewater side, we had originally anticipated a thirteen percent increase. However, due to some, uh, I guess provincial funding we got, um, we've been committed to fund our capital pumps. Uh, of a hundred fifty grand that are now gonna be covered by a these, the Swastika Water Sewage Extension Project. So by removing that, it brings down the wastewater side to a three percent increase. So that's, so we're eleven percent on the water side and a three percent on the wastewater side.
And that addresses, uh, the, and that addresses the brown water and the pump?
On the water side.
On the water side.
The sewage side, the the pumps are gonna be paid for by another project.
And there's other scenarios?
Well, it's, it's open to, if there's, that's the discussion.
Counselor Roman.
Okay, um, dealing with the the water budget first, okay, so you you say that the deficit dropped. Um, or the projected deficit dropped seventy-three thousand because of reduced costs and increased revenue. How much of that was increased revenue?
I believe, uh, I believe it's about a fifty-fifty split. Right, so fifty, so of the fifty grand, twenty-five thousand, uh, uh, in revenue projection increase and a twenty-five thousand decrease in expenses.
Well, it it dropped by seventy-three thousand days, so from.
Oh, correct, sorry, sorry, yeah, so about thirty-five thousand, it's a fifty-fifty split.
So would there also be an eighty percent, eighty percent of that revenue increase, would there be an eighty percent? Revenue increase on the wastewater side that corresponds to that?
I believe, I'll leave it to.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Because tip, whatever, whatever we bring in as revenue for water, we're bringing in eighty percent of that as revenue for wastewater. So if if we're anticipating another, say, forty thousand dollars. Um, in water revenue, we we should be anticipating another thirty-two thousand in in sanitary revenue. Should we not?
So the the way the the budget is calculated is that, um, we did all the costing. And after doing all the costing, as you can see on on the, on on there. The total costs are expected to be covered completely by by the revenue. So whatever the costs are, they are completely covered by the revenue.
Okay, it it it's just that, we we didn't see a a revenue increase on the on the wastewater side. Even though we're now seeing an increase in revenue on the water side, I would have expected to see one on both, like a corresponding one for for the sanitary. Okay.
There might be some revenue coming in that they don't have wastewater, is it, I'm sure there must be some of those.
That is true, yeah, yes.
So if that's.
There are some accounts.
Yeah, that don't have wastewater, so if that's where the revenue came from.
Again, these are, these are projections, right? Um, obviously, we're doing a, we're approving a budget prior to year end, so this is our best analysis on the the information we do have. So we refined it as best we can. Um, it's it's subject to change. Um, again, this is our best estimate.
Okay. Um, and and another question I have is the the program support now that that you're proposing, there's eighty thousand in in the water budget. How how are you coming to those numbers?
So there is a formula in the municipal act, uh, under the financial reporting of how we allocate program support. Based on the size of a municipality. Uh, one formula is for municipalities that are over a hundred thousand population, and there's another formula under a hundred thousand. We met with our auditor to make sure that the program support numbers is the same as what he's been reporting annually through the the F I R, the Financial Information Return. For the last few years, so we jive with that. So it's basically a formula calculated, uh, based on your budget.
Okay.
Of the total, so how much of the total budget is water versus the whole, the entire corporate budget, and it's a calculation of that.
Okay, and now, it, so have we got a mechanism now when we're doing the the regular operating budget that's going to recognize that?
Yes.
This money was pulled out?
Yes, and remember, this is one-third of it, so this is, yeah, we're, we're phasing this in over three years, yeah, yeah, we're gonna be phasing this in over three years.
Okay, so.
So there will be a decrease on the tax side annually for three years.
Corresponding to.
Corresponding to this.
Okay. Another question I have about the water budget is the the connecting link. Um, I I see now that the connecting link job isn't going ahead, how did we? How did we come, because I see that the funding is conditional upon us putting it out to tender, uh, next year. So we're we're at in jeopardy of losing that funding.
So we received, just to, um, provide some information, we received a letter from the province saying that they're funding. Surface road, uh, surface infrastructure to the tune of eight hundred and thousand and change. Um, the the, uh, the way it works is, um, the municipality can apply for, uh, additional funding for underground infrastructure. However, they also have to provide matching dollars, I believe it's ten percent or or ten or twenty percent, I can't remember off the top of my head. Um, in twenty, and the deadline for that was, uh, late September. We didn't have matching dollars to fund it, no, the twenty-seventeen budget did not approve matching dollars for it. So, uh, we do have the eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the surface. Uh, unless council wishes to fund the underground infrastructure in twenty eighteen, um, we won't have any, uh, funding for it. So we're gonna try to negotiate to do the surface stuff alone, if we can, sometimes we, the projects cannot proceed, depending on the way the province wants you to use their allocation funding. But essentially, there was no money in the seventeen budget to fund a matching contribution. Uh, it wasn't built in in the seventeen budget, um, so we're not gonna have it in eighteen. And the way this budget is written, next year, if we get another provincial grant for the surface infrastructure. We have zero reserves in eighteen to match the the following connecting link, uh, funding.
So how how much is the the underground unfunded?
It's about seven hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand, it's one of the, yeah.
Okay, so the 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 surface job is still.
The surface job is still, yes, yes.
Okay. Um, do you mind if I keep, I got a couple of questions on the wastewater budget now. Oh, the the only question actually was, it it had to do with, um, when we looked at the the October thirty-first.
Variants?
Financial statement there, um, the service repair and maintenance, um, for wastewater. We were projecting, uh, roughly seventy-five thousand dollars to take place in in the final two months of the year. Is that, I I see that hasn't changed, so do we have that much work? Projected before year end in in wastewater service repairs and maintenance? Cause that's contributing to the sixty thousand dollar deficit in the wastewater.
Uh, my understanding is yes, and I can ask the town engineer to confirm that. We asked for the, for updated, um, variance numbers, year-end projections, and this one didn't change.
Actually, excuse me, there is work done already and not been invoiced. So this money is gonna be towards the invoices anticipated for the end of the year. So work done was in two thousand and twenty, but it's not invoiced yet. So the invoice is coming and it will be covered by this one.
So the grant is being spent in all of that?
Yes.
Okay, that's all the questions.
Counselor Shamyard.
Okay, Peter, just a quick question on the water budget, so we have brown water in there and the water pump in there. I think the water budget, what we're trying to do is not to adjust it every year. So is that gonna be paid over one year or over three years, those two? Like, like, is there gonna be any more expense on brown water, like, every year coming up, or is it just a one-time thing?
My understanding, it's a one-time capital project of two hundred grand.
Should we? Like, like, next year, they'll have to readjust again. Should we not maybe put it beside, on their line, on their, on their water bill, say, this is for the for the brown water? And then next, next year, this is disappearing. Cause you don't want this in there, and then every year, people expect to pay that. It's a one-time fee, they have to understand that.
The brown water is, yeah, but it's a capital project, right, we're funding capital projects through the water rate, so.
What what I'm saying, people will think, and I I know that's all they say, you say, after it's there, it'll never come out, but it should be coming out next year. It should not be in there again next year.
Well, the brown water won't be, but yeah, so you're.
If you charge me this year one sixty every three months, next year, you should go back to one forty-five or whatever.
Yeah, so next year, when we do our money, when we do our budget, we won't, we'll have to look at all our expenses before we propose the water rate increase. And if we don't have a two hundred thousand dollar expense, it won't be that, right, so it should be adjusted automatically.
Explain that, Tony, on the water bill cleanly?
You mean have it added on to the?
Well, whatever you want, what I would do, I would put three lines, this is your regular bill, this is your one-time fee, and then your total.
Portion for the brown water, I I don't know, I guess that would be in accounting, if that's possible.
People should know this is a, hopefully, a one-time thing, and this should fix the brown water. Cause I know, I got a lot of people complaining about the water rate going up, but also, if it goes up, that one year, because of brown water, will be fixed. People could live without, I think.
Yeah, and I think you're you're assuming that no other infrastructure will need to be replaced, right, like, could do we, so you, you, I under, I guess you're trying to comfort and put it in the messaging. The reason we're having an increase is for the brown water and the pump.
Yeah.
If, but, you know, I guess that, would we do that next year, if we have another pump, or if we have another pipe that we have to replace?
It's not gonna be two hundred and eighty-five thousand again.
We don't know what it is, we could be more, no, it could be, some infrastructure is very expensive, right, and we do not have reserves. Or that's, that's the issue with this, is that we can't draw, like, for this year, we're actually drawing down a hundred and nineteen thousand. So we do have some, so it's not going up as much, cause we did have a reserve.
Yeah, there is a reserve, yeah.
So, but that, it'll be zero, uh, at the end of this year, at the end of twenty eighteen. So again, when connecting link comes next October, when they mail us the letter, and they said they're gonna do government road, and they're gonna ask for matching dollars. We're gonna say no, once again, because we're not building anything in to to fund it.
And that's another thing, Tony, I don't, I mean, Peter wasn't there, but we always usually would do the surface and the underground. And we always find a way, if if we need seventy thousand dollars, we'll put it in next year's budget, and it has to be done. And there's been ideas for as long as I remember. But people, people here, they're, no, there's no way for them to know that, uh, maybe should have been told, or. Uh, that that should continue, that's the one way to fix, cause we're not, I mean.
Just just to clarify, that would mean that you're increasing your water rate, cause you're increasing the rate to put into a reserve fund.
Yeah, we, but sometimes we didn't have reserve fund, and we just did it anyway and put it in the, I think they put it in the regular budget, though, didn't do it, sorry? Yeah, I think they did. Is that what it was? That's what I thought, yeah. Like, you know, I think, Peter, that's our chance to do it, cause if we, like, we miss our chance of government road, so that's, that might not be done now for fifty years. It should never happen again, but you won't be here in fifty years.
Sure.
And probably me neither. But yeah, Tony, that's, that's an important thing, we always did that, and I think that was a good way to do it. Uh, people always say, well, you could just fix it, but we always fix it when we did the road.
So, yeah, I think, because previous years, the wastewater was tax-supported, and up until this year, so you probably got away with using tax dollars to do the, some of the infrastructure. Now that water and wastewater, one hundred percent on the user pay, you have to fund any reserves, so if you have matching dollars, it has to come from this budget. And in twenty eighteen, we will not have, the budget we are proposing now is an eleven percent increase, will not have any matching dollars for the water side. On the wastewater side, we will have a hundred and, um, twenty thousand, or I can't remember, a hundred and nineteen thousand.
Are you telling me you cannot transfer money from your regular budget to the water budget?
Not from tax to non, non-tax support.
Counselor Kylie.
I don't support the eleven percent increase, I think there's, could be a different way of doing it. If you look at, uh, the two thousand and eighteen water budget, you've got three items, uh. The deficit, the brown water, and the water pump, all coming in one year, which is unusual, it's three hundred and eight thousand dollars. And that's, the the fact that we don't have any reserves is coming back again to bite us in the bum. And, uh, I think that's one of the things we we've gotta get, uh, start doing in in, from two thousand and eighteen on. I can, uh, I have, my thoughts, uh, I'm I'm gonna let Counselor Morgan, uh, extend where I'm coming from. But on a different method of collecting that three hundred and eight thousand, as opposed to, uh. Jacking the rates up by eleven percent, I do think we have to go somewhere between three and five percent increase in rates. Just to get those reserves back up and start having that money set aside. Matter of fact, uh, as I mentioned, I was was at Aqua and talking to Eric, uh, last Friday. And I asked him to plug in a five percent increase, uh, for the next twenty years, five percent a year. That would bring the reserve funds up to close to fifteen million dollars. Now, in twenty years, would we have fifteen million? No, because, uh, but the money would be there for items like this. And, uh, some of the ongoing maintenance, unexpected costs that that come along. Maybe we don't need fifteen million, uh, we have a new water plant, it's, uh, it's gonna last more than twenty years. But we have to look at the long term. I'm gonna let Counselor Morgan, uh, expand on, we've had some discussion on it today, as to what, how we propose to, uh, to cover this three hundred and eight thousand.
I just, I have a couple of questions to get it clear in my mind first, uh, that's fine.
You're okay with that, Todd?
It's a, um, so eleven percent would, uh, would address the cost of of living, cost of of hydro, cost of. It would also address the brown water, and would also address the pump, a spare pump. So what if we, um, so what if we did? The brown water, I think there's a general consensus, I believe, at our last meeting, and every time we talk about it, that we have to do something with the brown water. So what if we, if we did the brown water, what would be the effect of not doing the pump till next year?
So the percentage increase would be seven percent, so that would increase, that would basically be your inflation, your program support. Uh, your, and your brown water as a capital project, so it'd be a seven percent increase. Not doing the pump, so the issue with not doing the pump is, if and when the pump breaks, March, May, April, we're gonna replace it.
Or it could break in two thousand and nineteen.
It could break in twenty twenty-nine, but, uh, but this is going on, uh, the the asset lifecycle, right? So you do an asset plan, as Counselor Kylie had mentioned, you do an asset plan and you try to stick to it. Uh, otherwise, what's the point of doing an asset plan if you're not gonna try to sit to it? So these are old pumps, from what I understand, um, they are at the end of their lifecycle. So, uh, the the risk is, yeah, we could keep rates low this year, if the pump breaks in eighteen, we go ahead and replace it, cause we gotta keep the water running. And we just have a bigger deficit, we pass on to twenty, next year's budget, so that's, that's how we deal with it. It's not like, it's not like you can defer, so the project you can defer is the brown water, right? You don't have to do that one. Politically, obviously, it's a different situation, but if a pump breaks, we have no choice but to replace it. So whether it's funded or whether we go into deficit, we're gonna do it.
We have to do it anyways. So, so the brown water is about, uh, what's the brown water, that a five percent increase, roughly?
Like, the brown water, that's, it's a seven, but that includes the, uh, cost of, uh, utilities going up and that, but just the brown water.
Without brown water, without the pump?
The base budget without, um, without.
The base budget without, um, without brown water and the pump is actually 3%.
3%?
Yeah, so that base budget would include, um, a reserve, like what was in the budget for 2017, which is 117,000.
So then if we add the water, the brown water, then we're up at roughly 7%?
Yes.
And then if we add the pump, we're at 11%? So I guess, uh, it's, do we want to add everything this year? Is, is one of our questions, or do we want to just do the, attack the brown water this year? And that would be a 7% increase with the brown water? Okay.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to bring something up. A, a different way of looking at this, because we're, we're throwing around numbers like 11%. But that's only 11%. Like, when, when I think of my water bill, it's, I'm thinking of all of it, the water and the sewer altogether. So when you're talking an 11% increase on the water component, that's only, that's only an 11% increase on roughly half your bill. And the other part's going up 3%. So when you look at your overall water bill, it, right now, we're, we're proposing a, roughly a 7% increase overall. You, you, you're, you're, you know, you're inflating the water part 11%, you're inflating the, the sewer part 3%. So rough, roughly 7%. And of that 7%, half of it is this overhead. So 3.5% of that 7% is going to come off your tax bill. So we're, right now, this 11 and 3 proposal, in reality, your water bill's going to, your total water bill's going to go up 3.5% for, um, you know, inflation and everything else. The other 3.5% is going to come off your tax bill. So it, it isn't that unreasonable an increase as it sits right now. A, a, as far as the, um, Connecting Link goes, there, there is 100 and, there is going to be $120,000 in reserve for 2017. So, um, like, like Jean-Guy's saying, uh, I, I'm in favor of finding a way to, to make it happen, because they, they don't give out this Connecting Link money, you know, every year. So I'd, I'd prefer to see us do that somehow.
Just, just to clarify, the, the, the matching for Connecting Link was due at the end of September. So for us to go ahead and do it this coming May, we would have to pay the $700,000 next year. But you're talking for the 2019 Connecting Link?
Oh, okay, so you're saying it's, there, there's no possibility of doing...
Correct. We would have to fund it 100%.
Oh, okay.
Should we check on that? Let me just make sure there's no way we could, I know the dates are the dates, but...
Well, we could.
I mean, this could cost anything.
What doesn't get you, absolutely...
You always have to fight, Peter. Always.
Yep.
Counselor Morgan?
And, and I alluded to this at the last meeting when we spoke about it. We, we put a lot of thought and effort into getting Aqua to do a long-range forecast for it, for us. We, we thought it was, um, like, well, basically, we took it to the bank. That was going to be our, our plan going forward. To, to sort of circle back to what Jean-Guy said, and, and Counselor Kylie, the deviation from the Aqua plan is what, is really the, the hiccup that we're dealing with this year, I think. Uh, I'm suspecting that the pump is part of that plan, that was, uh, there's, there's something we're funding capital-wise out of that plan, right? Is it the pump?
The, the on-shelf pumps?
The on-shelf pumps, which have been taken out already from the budget.
I'm talking both, because they're both, both part of that plan.
That's what I'm saying, from the sewage part, the $150 for the on-shelf pumps, this taken out of the budget, and will be covered, and we try, it's not a promise, we try to cover it in other projects.
So there's parts of the long-range plan that we've already taken out? Okay. So, this is, um, this is my concern, because all part of this plan, I mean, we, we committed to what felt like very significant increases, because they were going to be setting money aside for, um, uh, reserves. And we all bought into that plan last year. And I guess where I'm coming from tonight is that, um, well, a couple of things. The deviation from that plan, a good chunk of it is an upset, and that is the, the brown water issue. So that's kind of a one-time situation here, that's, that's throwing off our budget. And I'm with, uh, um, with, with Counselor Shamir, that I don't want to see necessarily our water rates go up just to cover an upset, when we've put a lot of effort into projecting out these, these, uh, increases. So I think there's got to be a different way to handle those, those upsets like that, rather than cranking up the, the water rates, whether we debenture it, or whatever we do. I think there's got to be a different way.
Just to answer that, there's, there's a couple of things that are the upsets. One, it's the brown water, that was never factored into Aqua's plan.
Right.
Uh, number two, when, uh, when wastewater and water moved from the tax, they never accounted for program support, they never accounted for the water clerk. So these are new pressures.
And, and I agree.
So that's a...
And I agree that those are, those need to go onto the budget, because those are long, long-range things that will stay there forever. But I'm talking about the one-time items that we're, we're dealing with for, for, for 2018. The other thing is, and, and I apologize, because I wasn't at the meetings where Aqua came and, and, uh, presented to do with the brown water issue, but the way it's written in the notes here is that there's first a trial for 50,000 or thereabouts, and then usually trial means that it may or may not work. And then, but we, we're automatically assuming that it's going to work, and we've, we're budgeting for that additional money. That I'm not really comfortable with, if that's the case. I think we need to do the trial in 2018, and then budget for the change in 2019. Because I don't, I mean, if it doesn't work, then we've budgeted 200,000, or $400,000, that's not going to get spent. Uh, so I'm a little unconcerned about that one. And while we're on the subject of, uh, of, you know, water wastewater, you know, when it comes to the Connecting Link situation, I, I think the consensus around the table here is that we can't do that unless we're fixing the pipes at the same time, because, um, I, I just don't see the value in doing that. Unless, unless somebody can show me that the infrastructure underground there is in good shape, and it's, it'll last 20 years. You know, as, as Jean-Guy mentioned, uh, we've developed a policy to always replace the subsurface when, when we do, uh, surface work. And I would hate to deviate from that, I think it's, uh, it's a bit foolhardy, but I can be convinced otherwise. So those are kind of all my, my issues out there, all at the same time. Just going to check. Yep, that's it for me.
Counselor Shamir?
On the same thing, Connecting Link, Peter, if we cannot apply for the underground stuff, can we delay Connecting Link one year? Or does that have to be spent next year?
We can look at that.
Yeah, I just, yeah, you should, because I, I think we're, like you see, we're probably, most of us are in agreement with that.
Yeah, I, I think at the end of the day, um, you're still not adding any money for Collecting Link matching funds. So that's still the issue.
Well, in the wastewater, there's 119, plus you added another, some, some, this year, um, you said that was 1, 121 or something, going in the water one?
Well, the water one will be zero at the end of the year, if we do brown water.
Next year.
For 2018, if we do brown water and the water pump.
But the brown water, I thought, so it's, it's a two, it's a two-level thing. You're right, we should just do 50,000 this year, and then next year. You can ask Eric.
We can't, that, the 50,000, it's just for trial, to supply the water for the whole town, for the Pacific Bay. It can't afford, like, we can stop after, it can't keep continuing, we can stop that trial, which is supplying the chemicals and going through the treatment process. We're going to stop that, and we're going to get the brown water again, until we get the complete 150 to embedment to the complete land. Again, the 50,000 is a trial. This trial includes chemicals and, uh, partial captain of the, of the water, 15,000, which is going to supply the water for the town, the whole town, to try getting rid from the brown water. For the Pacific Bay, we can't keep going for the full year.
No, no, yeah.
For this 50,000. So we're going to stop, if you agree with that, we're going to stop, and get brown water again, until 2019, when you approve the 150, and we're going to get the complete plan and...
But, but Samir, usually the brown water lasts, Eric would, would know, I don't know, maybe Johan might know. It lasts about five, six weeks, maybe. Like, I don't think it's a whole, all-year thing.
No, the 50,000, the 50,000, it's for, it's for the full town, supplying water for the full town. For the Pacific Bay, it may be months or, or, or two months, Eric?
But that might be, and, that might be enough, Eric, no? Like, it doesn't last a whole year.
We're hoping to trial it for, for the months of January, February, March.
Okay.
That's all, that's all that that portion can afford to trial.
Yeah. We spent so far from this plan, 30,000, and there is a 20,000, anticipated 20,000 until mid-January, and then we're going to start the trial until mid-March or end of March.
So how, how much does that cost, Samir, from January to March? Is that 50,000?
Yes.
Okay, well, that would be...
And then we're going to stop in March, if we don't get that complete 150, we're going to stop the trial. We're going to stop the trial, we're going to turn it back to brown water, until you approve the 150.
No, but, Samir, it doesn't go back to brown water?
Yes, it does.
From, 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 from last year, when, when the lake clears, the water goes clear. Eric, that's what you explained, I see.
So when the ice lifts, and we get oxygen back in the water again, then the, then the water will, will clear up.
Verify it.
But then we get into, to next year, and the same thing is going to happen, and, and...
So, so what are you telling me, Samir? It would be an expend of $50,000 every year to put chemical?
No.
No. The 150,000 will cover, it's, it's, we've covered the whole cost for the full, for the water supply, for the full town, forever.
But, what do you mean, every, all year?
Plus, plus just the operating, plus the operating. Like, we can add some operating, operating costs, like maintenance, some chemicals.
But, but, but Samir, I understand, why do you do it for the whole year to add chemical if we only need it for, for 10 weeks?
Sorry?
Why do we put chemical the whole year if we only need it for like 10 weeks?
No, this is, this is the equipment, the cost is not...
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
The equipment.
Okay, this is the equipment?
Yeah, so, so the vendor that's supplying the equipment, they're giving us a break.
Okay.
On, on the rental.
Right.
So the, the rental is the trial. So since they want to sell us that equipment, they're giving us a break on the rental. If it, if it proves to be successful, now we've got to purchase that, that equipment. The rental of that equipment will go against the purchase of the equipment, and then, and then we're up running. The reason that the initial cost is a $50,000 trial, the minority of that cost is the rental of the equipment. It's the preparation of the plant.
Okay.
To get this stuff installed, get it up to run.
So, so then, Peter, you could go back to what, uh, I think Todd said. So 50,000 this year, then after that, if it works, we're buying a machine, we could spread it over four years, five years?
One year.
Well, if you want to, but why don't you spread it?
With the equipment?
Yeah, it's a one-time machine you buy, that you'll have after that for 25 years. Or two years.
So you're trying like to debenture it?
Well, whatever you want.
So, so just, 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 uh, just, so, um, just to remind, water, wastewater is on the user pay. So unlike tax-supported programs, um, I cut, we have customers on the water side. So I want to ask the question for Counsel's consideration. What do we do when customers of the water service get brown water? We're not delivering the, the product that we promised them to deliver, so why should they pay for that product? So when they do get brown water, are we offering refunds? Or, because it's not on the tax support anymore. So it's not subsidized, it's a user-pay system.
Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, I have a little different view of what I would like to see. I'd like to see us borrow roughly 300,000, which covers the pump, the deficit, and the brown water issue, and the Connecting Link, 700,000, so we're talking a million dollars. Add it to this debenture that, that, uh, we're going to have to take out for the pool. And, okay?
Yeah, you're going to make some water, right?
I know, but, uh, we owe it, this is an unusual year, that we've got all these things coming to us at once. And then I'd like to see us increase the, the rates by 5% a year to go, uh, to build up the reserve and offset some of those, that payment that we're borrowing. We're adding on to that debenture. I, I normally wouldn't, I'm not excited about borrowing more money, but we're going to lose this $800, $800,000 grant on the, uh, Interconnecting Grant. I think we can still accomplish it without everybody taking a big hit on, on the rates. So can that be done?
That, we would have to take that back and look at it, because when you, when you start borrowing against minor infrastructure, this a million dollars is minor. We, we still have, we have 80-year-old buildings that will probably be coming to you on the tax side with, to need to borrow. Uh, we have a 60-year-old public works garage, an 80-year-old fire hall, accessibility issues in our buildings. So we're looking at multi-million dollar asset replacements that I, we would have to take this million dollars back and look at it. What, what does that do to our borrowing limits compared to what else we were going to recommend? To put it in, you know, a bigger picture, because it, it impacts the, um, it impacts our borrowing capacity. And, you know, I, I, I guess, on the Connecting Link side, I would hope that we would just defer that, if we can, not necessarily borrow to do it. But if we can't, like, we've got to look at that as well. I, I guess, my point is that we need to look at a million-dollar debenture over a multi-year capital upgrade plan for a bunch of facilities and a bunch of infrastructure. Right? It can't just be singled out on this particular one.
You mean separate from the pool debenture?
Yeah, the pool is, uh, the pool is a separate entity on its own, but this one will need to be the, you know, like you...
No, because it doesn't have to be 30 years, I'm...
No, the, yeah, the, the way the benches work, it's tied to an asset.
Yeah.
So the one asset would be the pump, right, for 200, for 85,000?
Well, when they do a debenture, it's over every, all the assets of the community.
No, not the way that you have to assign it to a tangible asset. So it's, like, the pool is a big asset, um, these ones are, they're a bunch of little ones, right? So whether we'd have to convince that as part of our application, that it's a bunch of, we're not upgrading a plant, we're upgrading a couple of pipes here, a pump over there, and we're buying some equipment for the brown water. So it's a little different, so I don't even know if it qualifies for a debenture, we'd have to look at that.
Counselor Morgan?
I think the only reason that, that Pat is suggesting this is because water and wastewater were very clearly defined last year. The rest of those items that you mentioned, they weren't discussed, they're not on this path that we set down for wastewater and wastewater. 2017 is a very upset year, there's a lot of one-time costs that we're going to have to deal with this year because of a lot of different issues. We'll deal with them in the tax base as well, but we're dealing with them here. And I think, and I, I mean, I'm no fan of debt, don't get me wrong. Uh, I don't like it, I think it's, there's a purpose for it, I think it's, it belongs out in the business sector. I don't think it belongs necessarily in government. But we also have an obligation to our taxpayers, and these are taxpayers, we can call them users or whatever. But at the end of the day, we need to shelter them from, like, the cyclical, and that's what we tried to do last year, with adopting that long-term plan. So if you're telling us that that plan was not good, and there's a whole bunch of stuff that we weren't anticipating coming down the pipe, then we're going to have to redo that long-term plan. But I mean, we were pretty confident that we were, that the majority of what we were going to have to deal with when it came to water and wastewater was in that plan. And like, like Pat says, if we're, you know, if we're looking at a 5% increase a year, and that's going to build up our reserves at the same time, um... a year, and that's gonna build up our reserves at the same time, um, we're not gonna get to those reserves for for the connecting link. I mean, we're gonna have to do something different for, to fund the 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 water and wastewater portion of the connecting link. That's not gonna happen out of the, necessarily out of the water budget that we have now, and nor should it. I mean, uh, in the sense that that is an upset, it's a, it's a one-time situation that we need to stick handle around. Uh, and that's where I'm coming from. I mean, I'm not in favor of cranking up the water rates only to fight and chew and argue next year to try and bring them back down again. Um, I wanna see it long, steady, and that's what we bought into last year, that's what I'm comfortable with, and that's what I'd like to see us stick to in in this water and wastewater, uh, budget that we're doing. I mean, yes, we're gonna have to compensate for those, for those bulges from time to time, but there shouldn't be too many bulges. Like, Eric and his crew did a good job, we thought, last year on predicting. I mean, they had a lot of, well, just about everything in there in that plan. And we thought we were, you know, at least the water and wastewater part, we had a clear picture going forward, and that's.
Yeah, and and I think that that on the water side, again, we have the brown water, which is new, which was not part of the twenty-year plan.
Is it a trial? Because trial implies experiment to me in my brain. So is it a trial, or is it just like phase one? Because I'm getting conflicting messages here on the.
I will defer to Eric.
Uh, it's it's a combination of both. It's 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 phase one, we have to do, we have to do some, the best technology to it. The good news about this is that if this particular unit works, Todd, it's going in, that will be the unit that's going to be used.
But you're, I pick up on the word if. Do we know it's gonna work? Like, do, because we need to budget that hundred, we need to find that hundred and fifty grand somewhere. And I'm all for fixing the brown water, don't get me wrong. But if this is really still at the experimental stage, then we deal with, you know, we deal with the experiment in twenty and twen-
It's not experimental, but this is now, you've chosen what we, what we perceive as the best technology, and now you have to test it, right? You go to a car lot, say, okay, this is the car I want, you're still, you're still gonna test it, right? So now we have to test it, I'm not gonna, I couldn't go out and spend your quarter million, and then I'll just start to decide on it. It's not quite going to work, right? The wise thing is to always try, to always try. If there's not a town that I work in, then I'm gonna propose a piece of equipment other than simple simplicity, then I'm not going to try, right? Because I'm not coming back to, I'm not gonna come back to town so a year from now, to down to Kirkland Lake, a quarter million dollar, four fifty thousand.
But is there a chance we're gonna come back fifty thousand dollars poorer and say, mm, you know what, we think there might, we need to tweak this a bit more?
I'm very confident in the choice of it.
Okay.
I'm not, I, you know, I'm not gonna put my entire life on it, of course, that's why I try, I'm very confident, that's why I choose.
But but therein lies my point, is that we're dealing with a very difficult budget here, and I wanna fix the brown water as much as everybody else around this table, but are we guaranteed to spend that hundred and fifty grand in twenty eighteen? Or should we deal with that right at the hop in twenty nineteen? That's where I'm coming from.
Everything practical, it's been built on theoretical basis. So theoretically, uh, this is the right way to treat the brown water. Theoretically and chemically, we had, like, I've been through different municipalities, they have this, especially in Northern Ontario, they have this, and they are suffering from the brown water. However, different municipality had been treated in different ways, depends on the causes of the brown water. Theoretically, as the basis of the practical test, this is the best way to go through it. I met with the people, the special chemist and the chemical people, and they showed me the series they built their their opinion on, and they convinced that this is theoretically, it is the right way to go through it. However, like, one percent, five, point oh five percent, just to try, we tried in practical and we see. In accordance to the water investigation, laboratory tests, and all what we did, and the chemical results, and the trials we did in lab, in laboratory, this may work. In laboratory, it worked, and theoretically, it says okay. However, we wanna try, and the right way is not to buy the equipment, and then we're stuck with it if if just just one percent come over. So we're gonna try for renting, and we see how it goes. And again, whatever money left, it will be back to the budget, it's not, we saying this is the estimate, the the cost estimate for the trial and the cost estimate for the work. But if it is less, it will be less.
Counselor Shamir.
Yeah, as a mayor, thank you very much, and Eric too, that's what we wanna hear. Uh, so you guys are done, we're happy with this. The thing is, like Todd said, though, how we wanna, how we wanna fund this. What I would do, like Todd said, and I think most people seem to agree, I would put fifty thousand dollars next year in the budget, Peter. We'll go ahead, see what happens. If we're happy, next year, the new council could decide if they wanna keep going with this, and they will probably, they should. But and then you could, I don't know if you could split it over three years, or you have to do it in one year, but anyway, that's the way I would do, that would be the first thing. The second thing, I would go a connected link and see if we could, if we could supply for it, or if we could delay it for one year, and then next, in two thousand nineteen, do connecting link with the underground, and put the seventy thousand dollars in the budget, it's only seventy thousand, it's not like, um, that would fix that too, and I think that's all there was. So Samir, you're you're sure that that technology, you're happy with it, it should work?
Theoretically, it should work.
Yeah.
And the tests that they did in laboratory, as a result, it says it will work.
And I think most people in town will be happy to hear that, uh, because that's a big problem. Brown water has been a problem for Kirkland Lake for a long time, and not just Kirkland Lake, like you said, every little town around the north has a problem, including North Bay, Sudbury, Timmins.
With different reasons.
Yeah, yeah.
With different reasons, like we had, we here in in Kirkland Lake, we have the manganese. The manganese element is the cause of the trouble, the prob, our problem. And the manganese is hard to deal with, it's kind of the elements which are hard to deal with, it's even harder than the iron.
Correct.
Uh, so different municipalities, you have different issues to deal with.
And different, different way to deal it, yeah. So Peter, go back to you now, what?
So I guess I'm a bit confused here. Um, we talk about in, funding the infrastructure gap, so I gotta look over the last ten years how much council, this council and the previous councils funded the water, wastewater infrastructure, if they funded it at all, and what they did, um, and how we put a plan forward, going forward. With regards to, so with regards to the Aqua twenty-year plans, so our proposal here, we had originally proposed on December fifth, according to the twenty-year plan, to buy sewage pumps for a hundred fifty grand. We took that out because it's gonna be funded by another provincial-funded plant, so we're not asking for that. On the water side, water side, the debate seems to be about how much we spend on brown water. So according to the Aqua plan, we're still now gonna contribute the money to the water pump. So we're funding the water pump and some amount of brown water, is that correct? Is that what I understand?
Well, I would be happy if you, now, if you tell me how much, how much you have to make, and that's what I think Pat was asking. If you tell me, if you take one fifty dollar there and you put fifty, um, and then you have to make sure you have money for the, if we do.
So you're probably, you're probably, three percent is your base budget on the water side, um, and then if you put out the water pump, with the water pump in?
And instead of, instead of two hundred, put fifty thousand.
Just to clarify, the the three percent base budget includes a capital reserve, just like twenty seventeen, over a hundred and seventeen thousand. So it would be able to cover the fifty thousand if that's approved, and then we have about sixty remaining.
So how much would we need to cover the water pump?
We would need additional twenty-five thousand.
Additional twenty-five thousand.
You also won't put money aside if we do the, the underground pipes on the urban road, and that that's about seventy thousand.
Seven hundred, seven.
Yeah, no, but we pay ten percent if we apply for a loan, we always apply for a loan.
This loan, I've been, I discussed that hardly with the with the offerer, and they said it can't be deferred to the next year, because this is a residual from this year budget, and it has to be consumed in this year budget. It can't be deferred to next year. And the condition is to have, uh, the project tendered and the contract award to pay us fifty percent of the available fund, which is eight hundred, around eight hundred fifty thousand. So, uh, the the other issue is applying for different funds from different, uh, subsidiary bodies from the government, it won't be until April, because the, they want to open until April, the the year ends in March thirty-first, so they want to open again for us to apply until April. And some of them, they closing in in September, but there is a conflict between the dates here. Some be, the the Ministry of Transportation Fund is closing in March thirty-first, and the available fund from others, it may be available after April first. So I am guessing if we need to get used or to get benefit from this eight hundred and fifty thousand, we should have tendered this and get this budget and support the underground infrastructure, underground, the water and wastewater pipes, uh, somehow, until we apply in 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 in, in in May for another fund.
Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, Samir, on the connecting link, the underground infrastructure, pipes, water and sewer, uh, how old are they on, in that particular area?
I think they are over, I'm not sure how old they are, but I think they are over twenty-five years. They are over twenty-five years old, and.
What's the expected life cycle, the normal life cycle? Might be a different Northern Ontario one.
Different life cycle be in for water and and wastewater, because wastewater is under gravity and water under pressure, so there is a variation between twenty-five and forty years. Twenty-five years and forty years, this is the life cycle for the, for the water and wastewater, uh, pipes.
So at some point, we are going to have to replace them over the next ten, fifteen years at max?
And it's not rational to do the project and do the, uh, paving and the.
Yeah.
Surface structure and leave the infrastructure.
I agree.
Yeah.
Hosea, could I ask you, connecting link money, if you know, um, what is the provincial share and the municipal share on connecting link? Is it fifty-fifty on connecting link?
Actually, I'm I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
Can I answer?
Sure, please.
Connecting link is completely Ministry of Transportation share, and there is no condition for the town to pay anything in addition to that. We're gonna get that.
Underground.
A pure, clean meat, without any bones, for eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
But on surface, condition to be tendered and awarded before March thirty-first.
Oh, that's that's the condition, is Samir?
Yes.
And there's, well, can, can we check on this, Peter?
And the other condition is not to use it, not to use it for other than surfaces.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No water.
No, 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 I know, I know. And that's why, Samir, we always do, we always do both at the same time.
Yeah.
And we missed, but this year was this year, and we missed it, and, but can we check, Peter, if we could try to find some, a way to do it, or? Sorry, Samir, we have to try to find a way.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay.
We can just refer and see.
I can run a deficit.
I agree.
No, no, but the government might might give you some leeway, they're they're nice sometime, especially as the provincial election this year coming up.
So just just to go back, so what are we settling on? We are, so a base budget on the water side is a three percent. There's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in capital for that. What are we using a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in capital for? The water pump, the brown water, or just to keep it in reserve for next year's connecting link? That's the question here. If we don't wanna go above three percent.
Well, if we don't wanna go above three percent, Todd, we can't do the, we can't do the brown.
You're not doing the brown water?
But I I'm hearing some are saying, you can, let's not commit the whole three hundred for, is it three hundred for the brown? Two hundred for the brown, but let's commit the the fifty for the.
Yeah.
Trial while the ice is still on the lake.
So we have a hundred and seventeen thousand capital dollars, we can.
I think, Peter, you should keep this, try to match cap with with your, with your connecting link there, and I think you should put in the budget fifty thousand that we have to put, and your pump. We need a pump, I told, what do you guys think?
The pump, though, that's that's a different pump than the ones that are getting replaced by the sewage, or the swastika.
On the water side, okay.
And and there's no pump on the, in in Swastika that we could, or is that not?
Sewage pump.
Yeah. Oh, wait, totally different. No, no, but is there, is there not water pump there too? No, it's it's all sewage?
Yeah, the sewage pumps are getting covered by the Swastika project.
Yeah, yeah.
So the sewage side is going up by three percent, that's the base budget, that's essentially the base budget, there is no capital projects on the sewage side, it keeps our capital there of a hundred and nineteen thousand.
Because, Peter, if you go three percent and seven percent, like, um, like Jim said so well earlier, you'll be about four point five, five percent, which is, I think, what Pat was looking for. Right, Pat?
Yeah.
So, and that would give us money for covering anything link, hopefully, it will give us the brown water fixed.
So are, are we doing the two hundred grand for brown water, or the fifty grand?
Fifty. And then the new, the new council next year will, will decide how to do it, because I think the machine's gonna work. Well, we're not supposed to tie the hand up.
Counselor Morgan.
Just to clarify, though, uh, the recommended increase in the Aqua plan, was it just three percent? It was more than that, wasn't it?
No, it was three.
It was just three, okay.
Yeah, and and I, I think that, and I haven't studied the Aqua plan in detail, but having worked for the City of Toronto Water Department, um, our base budgets were three, three to four percent. So that just covered our inflationary costs, utilities, staffing. So it did not cover, it covered zero for infrastructure, which is why we did the nine percent over nine year, nine percent for nine years in a row. So because that balance of five percent was exclusive to capital. So if we just raise the water rates at three percent, whether it's this year or next year, you're not gonna have capital built-up dollars, because you're covering, like, our our base budget's going up by three percent. So it's just gonna absorb the the, the operating impact, the operating inflationary costs. So it has to be higher if you're actually looking to replace capital infrastructure.
Okay, well, then, we need to redo that long-term plan then, because, um, I mean, we we need to have a long-term plan, and and I think you're leaning this way with all the rest of our, our facilities. But we thought we had that long-term plan when we, when we bought into it last year. I mean, it was, it took a lot of commitment to sit around this table and say, okay, you know what, we're, yes, you know, we all agreed that we can tweak it from year to year, but the long-term plan was, look, this is, these are the kind of increases that we're gonna be looking at in order to put dollars away and to be able to fund all the maintenance that's required and and all those other good things. Now, if it's just a matter of one percent here and there, that's, that's one thing, but it sounds to me like you're saying that, no, we're looking at, you know, instead of three percent, it should be, well, you're saying eleven, but that's, that's to deal with some, some outliers this year. I mean, so if if it's, if it's not good, then we need to redo it ASAP and and so that we know, and the people of Kirkland Lake know where that trajectory is going when it comes to water and wastewater.
Yeah, I I think what you do is you break down what's your next five years' operating forecast increases, just on your hydro alone, right? Um, and then you do your capital infrastructure, you take that separate. You kinda look at them separately, and then you add them. You kind of look at them separately and then you add them together to what is that annual increase. Obviously, you look at, you have to look at your billing data and your collect, like, your collections data because, um, Kirkland Lake also has a, a higher above-average, um, uh, what do you call it, uncollectible tax rate? Well, if the homeowner or the property owner's not paying their tax, property taxes, chances are they're not paying their water bill. So that causes its own deficit, right? So there's all that issues as well. So you have to look at it holistically, not in isolation.
Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, and in fairness to Aqua, that report, uh, projections was based on the information that we gave, uh, Eric and his group, uh, which didn't include the utility or the, uh, collection clerk and a few other items as we, we said. So I, I agree with, uh, Counselor Morgan, that plan has to be rejigged to get the proper numbers. Because once you throw these items back in there, you're right, there won't be any reserve. And that's a big concern to me because we've been going that way for years and now it's come back to bite us in the bum, as I said.
But, but this year, there is a reserve built in there, right? There is a reserve this year built in there.
At three percent.
On both, in the three percent, yeah, so there is a reserve.
But some of it's gonna be, uh...
Yeah, so that's-
So the, the, on the water side, there's a hundred and seventeen thousand, from what I understand, minus fifty thousand from that for the brown water? And, is that correct?
You leave your brown water there at, at fifty thousand, not two hundred thousand. That's, that's the difference. Like, put fifty there.
Oh, you're adding, so this reserve, so from a hundred and seventeen thousand-
You leave that there. And I would like to know what it's gonna come out to, and then it might come out to seven percent, which I thought you had. Seven and three would be back to four point five, five percent. I think we could, I think we could agree on that.
Counselor Morgan.
The, the one thing that we need to all agree on is that the, there was a mistake made by, whether it was our staff or whoever, um, that the water clerk and those other positions should have been moved over to the wa, water wastewater. So that is, that's a baseline increase that's right on top of that three percent. So, I mean, we need to acknowledge that. I mean, because like, like Pat said, if we don't, if we don't accommodate for that, which is indefinite, like, that, that's going forward, um, then we're never gonna build up those reserves at three percent. Because, so we need to, we need to make that little jump this year and, and, and carry it forward from the Aqua plan. But the rest of it, we need to be a little more careful and try and get back on track, I think.
You got all this here?
Do you know what we're on?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So this, we're gonna do a real-time update of the water budget. I'm now, thank you.
So it will be one seventeen thousand plus the fifty thousand, which is one sixty-seven.
One sixty-seven.
And it will be five percent.
Five percent.
And, and that's, uh, looking at, but that's only looking at fifty, fifty thousand towards the brown water.
Correct. And then we're buying a pump and we're doing fifty thousand.
Is that five percent on the water or five percent?
Water.
Yeah, so five and three, so now we're four.
So just so I understand then, at the end of this trial period, I mean, because we're not buying these pumps right away, they're, they're gonna take them out then?
No, no, you buy them here.
Yeah, but how are we gonna pay for it with fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, next year.
No, they're gone. We're not, we only have fifty thousand dollars allocated to the brown water project.
For this year? For twenty- In two thousand nineteen, then you buy it.
So the pumps, for, logistically, I'll defer to Eric, what happens to the vendor, I'm assuming the vendor wanted to remove his equipment? Yeah, the equipment's gone.
You buy it though.
What do we buy?
The pump, at that time, in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, but he's, he's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna take it out in the middle of, uh...
They're removing it and they're gonna-
They negotiate with them, are you kidding me?
So they're gonna-
I, I'm sorry, uh, no remarks from the, uh, audience, please.
It's just hard to listen.
Thank you, then, then you're better not to come.
So just to clarify, that for fifty thousand dollars, it's the, basically the rent of the equipment. Um, that pays for the trial period for ten weeks. Once the trial period is over, the equipment will leave. And next year's council is, from what I understand, can decide to purchase a hundred and fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment.
And what's gonna be the effects of that decision? As far as, uh, Aqua?
Deferred.
It's not, it's not simple like that. The savings, the savings are being able to, you follow up from the rental of the equipment directly to a process. So it doesn't leave the site, it doesn't leave the property, it just, it just starts a full time. That's, uh, that's-
It's an incentive to buy it exactly.
So if we want to, if, so if we want to do the brown water, then we have to, are we compelled to do the two hundred k, a thousand? Or, or don't do, or don't do it?
No, we can't say, sorry, sorry, we can't say don't do it now, we spent already thirty thousand of it.
Yeah, 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 no, but after, yeah, but after.
Yeah.
Please.
We all know, here, here's a simple fact. Regulations right now, uh, the removal of evidence stop with the brown water with this iron magnesium removal system. Uh, what we're doing, if magnesium level is not, are going to get less in two years, here's what we're going to be allowed to have. This, this project is not a, it's not a blue sky project. It's something that, if it's not done next year, we're doing it the year after anyway. And then the year after, it's going to cost us a heck of a lot more than it is this year. So, so, so I would highly suggest, you know, on the way-
Like, we may be better to, to do the brown water at the two hundred and think about not doing the pump.
Yeah, just, uh, based on that, what I was gonna suggest is seven percent water increase includes the, the base plus the, but the, uh, iron magne, magnesium. And no pump. And if the, if the pump, if the pump breaks, uh, we will have to replace it and run a deficit.
That's right. Yeah.
I think, though, I think the, the, the one fifty, though, I think there's complications with the way the vendor supplied the equipment. And that just makes complications into us disentangling it. We've already sunk thirty-seven thousand dollars into the, 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 the project, so, uh, trying to disentangle it and do that, I think that's the complication.
Also, you might be returning your machine. We don't think so, but it could.
If it doesn't work.
Yeah.
If it doesn't work, if it doesn't work, we're gonna have a reason to return it.
Yeah, yeah.
But if it works.
So what I'm sort of hearing is, uh, I'm not sure where we're at here, uh, but I'm sort of hearing there may be some consensus in a, in a seven percent increase and, uh, on the water, a three percent on the sewage. And, uh, the seven on the water would, would deal with the, uh, would put us in, uh, in, in an investment to, uh, deal with the magnesium in the, in the water. Is that, any other comments or, or before we, I mean, because we can go on forever, right?
Yeah, i- if, if it turns out that the, uh, the magnesium solution isn't effective, we won't spend it, right? That will go back into a reserve fund, right?
That we won't have to get, yeah.
Right, so, uh, you know, we won't have to spend it, I guess. That's, that's the saving, one, one positive out of it.
Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, Samir, can I ask this one question? The pump, uh, is it possible to buy a reconditioned pump? And does it make sense as opposed to spending the eighty-five thousand for a new one?
Actually, actually, the eighty-five thousand, it's, uh, for, uh, valve retor, it's for, uh, valve reactor. It's, uh, it is the valve connected to the computer system to, uh, make, to make the, the, the filtration system works. So the actuator, the, uh, the actuator valves, it's, it's, uh, connected, uh, with the scanner. And this is, uh, says to, this filter, it needs to be ba, cleaned and this filter, it need, it can be work. And it gets one filter out of the system and gets other filter work in the system. We have four filters out there in, in our treatment plant. And, uh, if anyone, the, the four filters working together and it's controlled by the scanner system.
Yeah.
If any actuator not working, there is, like, every, every valve, every, uh, every filter, it has four actuators. And everyone does a specific character, a specific work to the, with the filter. This is makes backwash, this is makes filter, it makes the water filtrated. This is separated the, the, the filter, this is, uh, like, each, uh, actuator, it, it has a work, specific work to the, to the filter. But as I said, every filter has four actuators, so any one of them doesn't work, the filter will get out of the system. That means the amount of water may not be completed and done. What is Aqua proposing this year is to change only five actuator, which is their lifetime and their efficiency is looks not good. They still working, but it's efficiency is not good. So anytime, any one of these, and these five are not in one filter, are not in one filter. They are maybe two in one filter and one in other filter and, like, they are separated. If two of them or three, any one of them, uh, getting out of the system or fail, that means this filter will be getting out. And this is, will impact the quantity of water filtered and distributed in the system. Hoping that doesn't happen, two actuator filter together, that means two filters of the four. So the wo, water treatment plant will work only with a fifty percent of each capacity. So, uh, uh, like, we are simply saying a bump because these four actuator is impacted by bump. They are connected with bump, uh, working with the filter system, with the filtration, filtration system. So I don't see they are less important than the magnesium and the brown water. And I put here, like, it's put in here, uh, five every year, five, like, they are being distributed until twenty twenty-one. So because we have our treatment plant since, since nineteen ninety, ninety or ninety-two, something like that. So it's been working about thirty years. So we expecting anything like that happens anytime.
Okay, so I, I feel the engineers at sound. So you're saying you, you, uh, don't recommend a reconditioned pump? Or?
It's actuator, it's valve actuators.
Yeah, okay. No, the answer is no, okay, that's what I want.
Counselor Roman, please.
I'd like to bring this back full circle, um, to the original proposal, well, not the ori, today's proposal. The eleven percent increase on the water portion, the three percent increase on the wastewater portion. Overall is roughly a seven percent increase on your water bill. That includes the entire funding for the brown water, includes the recommended funding for the actuators. And of that seven percent increase, half of that is gonna come off your tax bill. So it, it's, it's a reasonable proposal and, and I think that's the one we should be going with. It, two weeks ago, they, they were talking about some serious increases. They, they've come back with, um, revised numbers, they, and, and I believe them. They're, and I, I think we should go ahead with what's been originally proposed tonight. Um, it, it takes care of the brown water issue, take, and, and if it, if the trial doesn't work, that money goes into reserve, which can be used for the connecting link if we're successful and, because I don't see funding the, the underground stuff for the connecting link hundred percent. That, uh, I'm not in favor of that at all. So if we go back to the original eleven and three, that's a seven percent overall increase on your, on, on your bill. And, and half of that's, you're gonna save on, on your taxes.
Counselor Samir.
There's no way, Peter, to spread that two hundred thousand over three, four years there. You don't think so?
No, like, the, the only way you would do that is if it's a multi-year project and it's not.
Yeah.
Um, and it's not big enough to issue debt.
I know.
Right, so.
Because that would fix basically the problem. Uh, because, because, uh, just to come back to Jim, the problem, Jim, with this is that it's not three and a half, it might be two percent. And it's not gonna come off your taxes, your taxes will probably go up, so there's no winning in this.
Well, you're transferring, of that seven percent increase, you're transferring three and a half of this.
Well, it's not three and a half, it'd be, it's more like two percent maybe, or, because you're not transferring hydro, you're not transferring all those little things.
Yeah, you're transferring, you're actually transferring over there.
Yeah, we're transferring over, program support plus the billing clerk.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, yeah, you are.
You need water bill.
Tell me how, how much it is after, it won't be three and a half percent.
So the only true increase is roughly three and a half. True increase, I can pop it, three and a half percent.
So, uh, Samir, if I could just ask you, and, um, so yours, I know we asked Eric on the brown water, on the, to, to treat the magnesium, I should say, but, uh, uh, are you also, so are you telling us also that, that those, the actuator, like, the actuators, it's not a pump we're buying, is it actuators or a pump? Okay, so are, are, is it your recommendation that we include that in, in, and get a, get one now? Instead of putting it off till next year?
I, I'm not saying to get it now, but we just, to keep money for it, it can fail anytime. And actually, if there's money for it, I get Aqua, get one just in case to keep it in that treatment plant.
But if we don't have that backup, is, are, is it, are we investing our money on the magnesium properly? If we don't have that back, or, or are they part, part and parcel together?
Actually, the ma, the magnesium, it is, it is, it is sustainable investment. However, it can't be completed without filtration. Because this is gonna go, like, this is steps, it's the steps. After we gonna deal with the magnesium, this water gonna go to the filtration system, which, if it isn't, if it doesn't work. So, sustainable, uh, investment, it's a complete plan. Excuse me.
Yep, please.
Go ahead, Eric, wanna say something?
Samir is exactly right. These aren't, these, these actuators aren't, they're, they're not a business at this point. These are, we, we, as Samir said, we're twenty-four actuators, so, uh, the reason we wanna tackle five this year, these are five actuators that we have had problems with, where they cause colic, they cause collisions, where they cause problems. And there's a very old style, it's forty-five year old technology, working off tensionometers and you can only buy two or three to a pump, right? So they have failed. So the reason we told them to work together to choose these five, because it's not, it's not, we think they might fail. They have failed. They're living. And they're not figuring it well either. And they were a bit of a close voice, they were already too far with this.
Yeah, so they're sort of right back to square one. But some good discussion, I think we all understand it a little bit better, how it, how it works, eh, in the, in the water side. But like, uh, um, if there's no more discussion, I guess this will come back in a bylaw. But, uh, is there a general consensus of a, of a seven and three and not, uh, going at it properly, or is it, is, is the eleven and three in tackling the problem the way we wanna go? You know, uh, but what, what we could do is, we could bring it, it'll come back as a bylaw and if it, can we have two, can we have two choices?
Sure, we can do the bylaw now. I have the, it's blank. Depending on what your consensus is. So I have a motion that is moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The bylaw seventeen dash one two nine, being a bylaw to set the two thousand and eighteen water and wastewater budgets with eleven percent increase to water and three percent increase to wastewater be- with eleven percent increase to water and three percent increase to wastewater, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
Two, three, four. Against?
Against.
Two. So it is carried.
Samir, Hosea, and Peter, thank you for your patience in answering all our questions because it's, it's very complicated for us, but, you know, we know we have to deal with it and we want to try to deal with it in the... Okay. Do I have to step down for any, no, I'm here now.
No, sorry.
Thanks again. Item seven, we have the introduction reading and consideration of bylaws.
It's moved by Counselor, sorry. Moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The bylaw seventeen dash one-two-six, being a bylaw to amend the bylaw seventeen dash zero-three-one. The bylaw to adapt, to adopt the two thousand and seventeen municipal budgets, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed. Now, this is just the bylaw that takes all the resolutions that you've passed over the year and just to, uh, to ratify them into the, uh, the budgets, the capital and the operating. We do this at the end of every year.
That's the one Hosea presented earlier.
This is above that, so this is, yeah, it takes all the resolutions that have been done.
All in favor?
Thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. That bylaw seventeen dash one-two-seven, being a bylaw to amend by law twelve dash zero-one-nine, by rezoning land at seventy-four Second Street to R two, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed. So this is your special meeting from last, last council.
All in favor?
Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The bylaw seventeen dash one-two-eight, being a bylaw to authorize the CAO to execute a settlement agreement with QP Local Twenty-Six, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
Thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Kylie. The bylaw seventeen dash one-three-one, being a bylaw to amend by law fifteen dash zero-seven-five, regulating the procedures of council by temporarily changing the venue for council meetings to Heritage North beginning January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
Thank you. Item nine, confirmation bylaw. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, notices of motion. Number nine, uh, confirmation bylaw.
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The bylaw seventeen dash one-three-two, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held December nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Counselors' reports.
Since our last meeting, I did attend, uh, Northern College, they had the Driller Assistant Graduations and there was five graduates. Uh, they, they run, I believe, two graduations a year. And I wouldn't be surprised to say that all the, all the graduates are, are gainfully work, uh, employed and, uh, so it's a great course and it, it certainly fills the gap, uh, that's needed in, in, in the drilling, uh, in the drilling field. Also had the, uh, pleasure of, along with Counselor Barker, of attending the, uh, the Town of Kirkland Lake Recognition Banquet and Christmas celebrations and was a, a very good turnout. And, uh, as, as each year, I thank the staff on, on behalf of Town Council for, for their dedication and hard work throughout the year. I attended the Canadian Malartic Open House at Heritage North, uh, which was, uh, a very interesting presentation and, uh, uh, was, uh, like, a good number of people there and they explained that they're in a, in the, a very early part of a process of, uh, working with the Toberne and the, uh, the Brownfield situation there. And other than that, and certainly, uh, certainly want to wish everyone a, uh, a very Merry Christmas and a very healthy and Happy New Year. On behalf of myself and Town Council and, uh, I wish everybody to have a safe holiday season as well.
Uh, Counselor Kylie.
Yes, I attended the, uh, open house for the Swaseca decommissioning of, of the sewage treatment plant out there by, put on by, uh, Stantec and Aqua. It was very informative. They, uh, was hoping to see a little more attendance, but, uh, they certainly, uh, are doing their homework and, uh, it'll be nice to see this, uh, project move forward. Uh, I just, I'd also like to commend our local firefighters, uh, over the last couple of days, putting out, uh, a major fire. Uh, they certainly, uh, did their job and, uh, we thank them for their efforts. Thank you.
Very much so. And just want to add to that, all the volunteers that showed up. And it's always when we get these fires, it's always the coldest day of the year and it's usually around Christmas time. So, uh, I believe there was probably twenty-five volunteers, maybe, or somewhere around that, uh, chief that showed up, so, uh, and as Counselor Kylie said, you guys did a great job managing that fire so that the buildings, the both buildings beside, uh, were safe and you were, and, uh, people got back into their apartments in the early evening, if I, if I heard correctly. So thank you very much for that and we hope that you pass it on to the, to the crew.
It's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The council adjourns its regular meeting of December nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, to an in-camera meeting to discuss one issue concerning the security of municipal property, one issue concerning a litigation matter affecting the municipality, and one issue concerning staff negotiation.
All in favor? Meetings adjourned. Thank you very much.